I'm the Chief Financial Officer of the Virgin Islands Housing Finance Authority. And behalf of our Executive Director, Mr. Adrian Williams, and the entire staff of the Housing Finance Authority, I'd like to welcome you to the town hall meeting on the Mars Hill Multipurpose Indoor Sports Complex. Now, the Housing Finance Authority has been tasked with the responsibility of overseeing the architectural services, the engineering services, infrastructure work, and the construction of the Mars Hill Sports Complex. In order to accomplish this goal, the Authority has put together a task force of the following individuals: Angel Morales of the VI Olympic Committee, Senator Uci Richards of the VI Basketball Federation, Commissioner St. Clair Williams of the Department of Sports Park and Recreation, Mr. Rashidi Clennett from Department of Tourism, and from the Housing Finance Authority, Mr. John Green, our Director of Planning and Construction, and Richard Borth, Independent Contractor of RBC. The task force has been working to put together the vision, the scope, and purpose of the sports complex, in order to begin the first phase of architectural services. One of the key points that the task force has kept in the forefront of its decision-making process is that the Mars Hill property was purchased with community development block grant funds. Since the Mars Hill property was purchased with funds from the community development block grant, the facility, once constructed, will be designated a public facility. The term "public facility" in this case refers to a facility that is generally available for public use. For example, as an athletic facility is presumably expected that the outdoor recreation areas, such as the walking trails, would be accessible to the general public after hours. The indoor recreation spaces may follow a schedule closer to our regular business hours. Now, the sports complex will be subject to HUD compliance monitoring for as long as the building is in service, and that the general conduct of government operations are prohibited from the building. Today, we'll go over the history of the project, overview of the project, the project plan, the current status, pre-development activities, economic benefits, next steps, and questions and answers. We ask that you listen closely and provide us with your ideas, your questions, and suggestions. And thank you again for taking time out of your day to come here with us to help us make this a reality. And the next on the agenda is Senator Uci Richards, who will go over the history of
Good evening. Unfortunately, I'm not the high-tech person, so the computer's not set up for me. But I do want to thank you all for coming out and exhibiting your interest. I do want to take this opportunity to briefly, and I do mean briefly, speak on the historical origin of the project. Most of you who have been residents of St. Croix for any period of time may have known that in the late and mid-eighties, Farmer Santa Ecker and Isles had proposed on having a sports complex on the island of St. Croix. His efforts were followed in the 1990s by Farmer Santa Debois Brian to find some way to have a sports complex come to the island of St. Croix. It was initially planned for the site over at Estate Body Slab, and where in 1989, a portion of that property, after Hurricane Hugo, was used for the demolition and the burning of material waste following the event of Hurricane Hugo. And when I became a member of the legislature in 2002, I felt that, given the fact irrespective that it was in fact designated as agricultural property, that that particular area, which in my mind was no longer agri-able, could still be suited for the use of a sports complex. After I had the thought I pursued utilizing that particular site, and we found out from the individuals involved in farming, that they were not going to sit by and allow any more land designated for the purpose of agriculture be utilized for any other purpose but agriculture. And given the concerns and the protests shared by farmers and the Department of Agriculture, we were fortunate to have a family from St. Croix, particularly from the town of Fredston, became aware of this, and they came forward and offered an opportunity to purchase parcels of land owned by the former resident and great farm man in St. Croix, Mr. Charles Clark, and his descendants. They shared an interest, but their interest required an opportunity to purchase the property, and so that, as mentioned by Mr. Griffith in his introduction, the then Department of Planning and Natural Resources was the entity that was responsible for the community development block grant. And in 2007, the legislature became aware that there was a large sum of monies that the community development block grant was required to spend in a short period of time. Having heard this, the 27th Legislature, on June 20th of 2007, set aside a little more than a million dollars to acquire property from the Charles Clark family and his descendants. The bill was signed by the governor on July 6th of 2007, and the Clark family offered two particular sites to the government for the construction of a multi-indoor sports complex. And I do want to emphasize multi-indoor sports complex, because there may be some of you who may find yourself here today thinking that we were talking about Paul E. Joseph, or there may be some of you that may find yourself here today thinking that we may have been addressing the subject matter that was in the news back in the 29th Legislature about acquiring land and building swimming pools and building tennis courts. This is a multi-purpose indoor complex that has absolutely nothing to do with the Paul E. Joseph Stadium, the adjacent Martin Softball Field, and/or the designated site for a permanent village. This is in an estate, Mars Hill, approximately 45 acres. The...45?
Forty-four point five.
Forty-four point five, and at least when I went to school, usually run things up instead of down. So I would just say forty-five acres. The Department of Planning and Natural Resources, then headed by former Commissioner Robert Mattis, had the duty and responsibility for executing the law as passed by the legislature. So they were the ones responsible for going out and making a determination which one of the two parcels would in fact be appropriate based on its topography, its location, and its access to the community and public highways. And so the Department of Planning and Natural Resources selected a site in Estate Mars Hill of the approximate 4.5 acres. It took negotiations between the Department of Property and Procurement and the Charles Clark family to be able to enter into agreement and to execute a warranted deed, I suspect and I suspect I know, on August 24th of 2010. The deed was between the Department of Property and Procurement and the Charles Clark family on behalf of DPNR, the Community Development Block Grant Program. During that time, as mentioned by Mr. Griffith and acknowledged by the efforts of the Executive Director Adrian Williams, the functions of the Community Development Block Grant were relocated from DPNR to the Vol. Islands Housing Finance Authority with a consolidation of dealing with the US Department of HUD, with Housing and Urban Development. And so that the Vol. Islands Housing Finance Authority, by default, have in fact took on the responsibility based on legislation that consolidated the CDBG block grant program under their particular auspices. And given that responsibility, legislature saw that it was fitting that on March 23rd of 2011, legislation was passed transferring, authorizing the transfer of the deed and the property to the Vol. Islands Housing Finance Authority, an action the legislature took and was signed by the governor on April 9th of 2011. Given the fact that we are in a particular precarious situation in regards to funding projects, and a number of projects have come about in St. Croix, where a lot of talk was given, a lot of ideas have come about, the legislature saw it prudent to begin the process of supporting the Housing Finance Authority by setting aside $2 million from the St. Croix Capital Improvement Fund for the purposes of the Housing Finance Authority to be able to have architectural drawings, engineering, and infrastructural work. And that was done on June of 22nd, 2011, by the legislature, signed by the governor on July 12th of 2011. Subsequent to that, we know that $2 million can build a multipurpose indoor complex. And so that was a beginning step for Housing Finance Authority to be able to begin the process of getting the community's input into what should actually be in this facility, what it should look like. And we were confident that the multipurpose indoor complex that would be constructed was in no way would cover the approximately 45 acres of land. And so upon my leaving office in December 3rd of 2012, I wrote to the Executive Director Adrian Williams about all of the legislative process that took place, informing her of the availability of the $2 million. And in January of 2013, the Vol. Islands Housing Finance Authority, under Ms. Williams' leadership, formed a task force made up of members of the community, representing different sectors, and had those, in our opinion, that has some vested interest in making sure that the project does come to fruition. Following December 3rd, the last act that was taken, as most of you are aware, that the executive branch through the administration of Governor John P. D. Young, Jr., had interest in assuring that certain activities take place in St. Croix, and in this particular instance, the subject matter was sports complex. But the bill was still pending in the legislature, and so the legislature reached an agreement with the executive branch of government to split the $35 million that was set aside for the purposes of the Paul E. Joseph Stadium renovation, the Terrance Martin Softball Field, and the areas in that surrounded, and split that $35 million in half to have $17.5 million goes to the Paul E. Joseph, and another $17.5 million go to the development of the multipurpose indoor complex. That was passed by the legislature on November 28th of 2012, and signed by the governor on December 14th of 2012. So it is our hope that we can utilize this process to get our stakeholders' input, which is our community, individuals who may be involved in sporting activities, or individuals that are interested in the social and economic impact that a project like this can bring to the island of St. Croix, and in particular, to the revitalization of the western end of the island. And we're closed by simply sharing, Ms. Williams, some of the sports that we discussed. You have a presentation, but then I'm not going to preempt that. But I think that this is a suitable opportunity for those of you that have taken the time to come out, to give us some feedback in the planning process before plans are moving ahead to be finalized, to be able to encourage the executive branch through the Public Finance Authority to proceed on securing the money that has been authorized to float bonds by the legislature in the amount of $17.5 million for the first phase on the 45 acres of land. So I thank you all for coming, and we appreciate the opportunity to engage you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
And thank you, Senator Richards. And it said that you must know your history to know where you're going. And that's why we felt it was fitting for Senator Richards to outline the road that has been taken to actually get to this point here today. And I think that a multipurpose sports complex is an idea whose time has come. If you look at the many places that we hold functions, the missed opportunities for sporting events, you know that it's time that we do something about it. And for any idea, it's always hinged on someone who has been focused on it to bring it from concept to fruition. And I would like to publicly thank Senator Richards for his diligence in moving forward and seeing where action can be taken to avoid just pure rhetoric to make things happen. And in doing so, we, as you mentioned, pulled together a number of individuals when this project was placed into the Housing Finance Authority. I tell the staff all the time that when you do good work, you get more work. And we are honored, we feel that it's an important vehicle, especially during this time, that will contribute significantly to the economic development of St. Croix, Frederickstad, St. Croix, and the territory. So I'm pleased to see a number of the individuals here tonight that are here to provide input, because as you will see as we go along, that we are in the very nebulous stages of this planning, planning this project. We're at a point where we're open to suggestions, ideas, comments, so that we can shape what this facility would look like to meet the needs of the community. So in our initial discussions, we talked about, a little bit about what we would like to see. And we came to the conclusion that this project can be done in several phases. The core purpose of the project is to create a complex that will provide accommodations to house various sporting events: basketball, volleyball, boxing, along with concerts and conferences. And we'd be able to adjust the size of the floors, of the rooms, in order to accommodate the varying styles, the varying activities, as well as a multi-level parking area, so that we can have appropriate parking for tournaments and other concerts, et cetera. We know, I don't know anyone here who enjoys opening a WAPA bill, but we know that the cost of energy is really prohibits many businesses from being sustainable. And to the extent that we can ensure that the structure is energy efficient, numerous efforts will be placed in that endeavor. We're looking at the size of the facility, 5,000 to 7,000 seating capacity within the building, and be able to have rollback seating if we need to expand the playing floor. We're talking about being able to have professional teams as well, and also so that we can have Olympic-regulated sporting activities there. And not only just one floor, because we want to make sure that when professional teams or when we have official games, that there's one floor that we will be able to house that. But if we just want to have the pickup games, gym memberships, that we can have other types of basketball or other types of sporting activities that would be allowable and we'd be prepared for it, as well as concerts. And you notice I pick pressure bus pipe, because, you know, it's just like that. So in our discussions, we had some very, very good discussions, and the fact that we had people from varying backgrounds allowed us to think of things that we would not readily know of. For instance, if we want to invite professional teams to the Virgin Islands to have games, preseason games, there's some requirements that comes with that. And first-class showers, that would probably be the last thing I would think about. But having people who have dealt with this before know that in order to attract a professional team, you would have to have certain accommodations: professional showers, locker rooms, restrooms, places where they can have pre-game and half-game meetings with all of the technology. We have noted that this would be a very important component of this facility. So we're also looking at concerts. So if we're doing so, we need to ensure that there are ticket booths that can funnel large amounts of people in an efficient manner. Wilkow boxes, so that if you've already paid for your tickets, you don't have to go into the line. Those types of accommodations would have to be thought of and included in the planning stages, as well as an indoor gym, because you've heard that this property was purchased through Community Development Block Grant Program. That basically means we must have public access. This cannot be a facility that is closed up and wait until maybe the Spurs are coming to have a preseason game, or we're going to have some type of Olympic game. No, it has to be a facility that is in use and accessible by the public. Some of the other ideas, and tonight I want to reiterate that it's this session is one in which we want to share information. I tell you what we've thought about, you tell us what else you want us to think about and incorporate in that. And we said that in addition to these activities and these sports, we're thinking about this area being a vibrant area that has support in activities for the facility, as well as some low-cost activities that are family-oriented. And archery was one of them that was suggested. A paintball course. So on a Sunday afternoon, you bring your family out in the neighboring area, and paintball course. A golf range, putt-putt golf, to drivers on, for all of you who play golf. I don't know anything about golf, but those were some of the activities we figured that can be put into the first phase of the project. Then we're moving to the second phase of the project, because the first phase of the project has been funded through legislation. And I say that because you know that money's appropriated and then, or authorized, and then we have to wait actually for it to actually move from being an appropriation to actual dollars being transferred to the entity. The dormitory-style housing accommodations. I know I see many sports enthusiasts here in the crowd tonight, and you know that from time to time, we have teams that come from our sister islands, from our neighboring Caribbean islands, and we'd be able to have a dormitory-style facility that we can house teams that come to play, as well as having activities that will support the teams, cafeteria so that they can eat, that we can lease to a vendor, and be able to support traveling teams that come to play within the sports complex. So that will incorporate the second phase. We're looking at the third phase. Now, the third phase is actually what we've projected to enhance the entire area: restaurants, an amphitheater for outside concerts, small concerts, a splash park, an obstacle course. And those things, we feel, will create atmosphere that will generate activity, economic activity, and keep the area vibrant. Restaurants, a sports bar, you know, it's never fun. It's fun to watch the NBA and the Super Bowl in your living room, but it's even more fun when you have a whole lot of people around you. So having facilities that can accommodate that type of activity is what we have thought about and what we're proposing. And these are just the pictures of obstacle course, ziplining. The staff went out, and as we, we're going to hear about where we are today with all of the clearing, but there's a nice slope there. When we first talked about ziplining, we didn't envision that there would be enough sloping so that you can have a real true ziplining. But now that we've cleared it, there's a reason why it's called "Maz Hill," because they have a hill. So ziplining will actually be something that can be included in there. Rock wall climbing, a lot of family activities are what we have thought about to this point. So when we get later on into the agenda, I've just told you what we've thought about, and then you'll be able to tell us some of the things that you think, in addition to this, or if there's something here that you think is not appropriate, you'll have the opportunity to do so. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, and again, thank you all for coming. And it's nice to see a good crowd of folks, and hopefully we'll have some lively discussion later on some of the topics that Ms. Williams just mentioned. I'm here to discuss the pre-development activities that have taken place so far. As you know, part of our project was to get us to having a design of a sports, of a multi-use sports complex, and we have to do certain things. There are different methods of going about getting a contractor or a developer or builder to come in to actually work with us to construct the facility. So what we decided to do, in looking at the costs that we have and the revenues that we actually have to do this, as opposed to going out totally to some developer to help us go through the entire process, we took upon some of the activities that were necessary, such that we would know, actually I should say, such that we would have done our due diligence, such that we know what the site looks like, what the topography of the site is, if there's any archaeological types of findings and things. So I'll just give you an example, or just a listing of some of the things that we did, and then a little process of what we're looking to go through. Initially, we started, we did some aerial surveys, we have aerial surveys, we did that, we had a contractor come in to get us that information. Then we did some site clearing. Any of you that live near that area, probably you may be able to see, or if you fly in and out of St. Croix, you'll be able to see a bunch of lines that are going across the property right now. We had the surveyors come cut lines across the property so they could actually do a topo survey, so you could get some actual topography out there to see what the site really looks like. In addition to that, some of the clearing was done, such that an archaeological Phase One survey could be done. We have to have a parcel of that size. It's always good to understand what's there. Thus far, we've found that, yes, there are some ruins that are there, and we had to actually go back and do an extended Phase One archaeological study, where we cleared some 400 by 400 square foot area. And we found some small cisterns and some things, like maybe there were some houses and some foundations that were there in the past. And we have actual work going on right now onsite by an archaeologist. Subsequent to that time, we have a next set of surveyors coming in doing environmental assessment. That's a process where they go out and they determine if there are any hazardous wastes that are being found, so that if you are doing some type of development, people won't come into contact with oil, lead, any other type of waste that might be out there. Then we also did, just to make sure that we have enough information for the developer, we're actually doing a soil boring survey to determine the types of soils, adept to bedrock, adept to any water that might be on the site, and things to that effect. And that survey is about to commence probably within the next couple of weeks. Subsequent to that time, what we're going to be dealing with is we have to deal with some property access issues. You all pretty much know, I don't think that we really discussed exactly where the site is. The site is really backed, is right behind Claudio Marco School. You have actually, on the northern side of Claudio Marco School, you have a road that runs straight down there by the school. That is the actual edge of the property. There's another access on the other access to Claudio Marco School, so I guess a little bit south of that, you can run into that property there. Then the property runs, it goes all the way back to behind Concordia, the housing in Concordia, over there, or at the end where the bin sites are for Public Works, right there. So that's one corner, and the other corner diagonally is the corner right behind Claudio Marco School. And so as I said, it's 43 acres out there. So we have to do some access issues there. The property doesn't actually, for good access to the site, we've decided that we're going to be working along with the adjacent property owner to see if we can get access from Centerline Road that will come all the way in to meet the parcel. So we've got some property access issues to deal with. After that, we're going to be dealing with some of the design parameters, and that's what we're here to work with you all about, get some public input on what type of things that we want to see at the facility. As we move through that, then, once we get a whole idea party of what it is that we want to do on the site, then we're going to be able to move to look for some service providers. We're going to do that through a RFQ, a Request for Qualifications process, and go out on a large-scale bidding process to see which type of service providers can give us, that are qualified, can give us designed services. We're going to do a short listing of those service providers, down to three or five providers, and then we'll put out to them a request for proposal, where they will then give us some designs of the property, of what they think it is, given an idea of what we've given to them. And then subsequent to that time, once we select the designer of that time, we will then begin to move into some client contractor negotiations. We'll get ourselves to a point whereby we will be able to say, okay, given what we've all come together and discussed, this is the ideas that we're looking at. Before we set them into final motion and action, we'll have other community meetings where everybody will get to come in, take a look, and see what it is, if we want to move some things over, or we think we need more of this or that. We all have an opportunity to do that before we give any stamp of approval. We all have an opportunity to do that before we give any stamp of approval to the final design. And then we'll set them on their way to doing some design and, and design. Once we get that done, then we're gonna be looking for, making sure, hopefully by that time we have the funding, and then we'll look for doing some of the construction. So that's where we are and where we're looking to do, to go. And I think the next person up is Mr. Rashidi.
Good afternoon, everybody. Pleasure being home. And this is a very exciting project, but I, I think I'm here just to basically tell you the realities of it, being involved with a few events that have already come to the Virgin Islands. I've seen, I see some individuals who are sports aficionados, so to speak, who all have relationships that could actually bring more activity to this particular facility. The best example of this would be UVI Sports and Fitness Center in St. Thomas. But before I go any further, I was introduced as representing tourism. I'm actually representing Sunstroke today. I have a contract with tourism, and I, I'll bring a little bit of something from that aspect of my employment there, my contract there, but I'm here representing Sunstroke and not tourism. So the best example of this would be the UVI Sports and Fitness Center in St. Thomas. Now, they host the Paradise Jams, which is put together by basketball travelers, and it is a great event. We've had a few Virgin Islanders come and participate in that with their college teams, including Fred Williams Jr., I see senior in the house, and that was just a couple of years ago. This event is very successful on St. Thomas. One of the things about the UVI Sports and Fitness Center is that it can host that basketball event, but it also hosts volleyball events. It hosts commencement exercises. It hosts concerts in the past, however, the acoustics is not good, so promoters stay away from holding concerts there now. And those are the kind of things that we need to be wary of as we go ahead with this particular facility, that we don't fall into those same traps. They also host boxing events, and these are things that are actually happening, happening. These are practical things that can be segwayed to St. Croix. I can tell you for a fact that there's a NCAA volleyball tournament that's signed on to come to St. Thomas. One of the caveats of that event, however, is that when a facility such as this is done on St. Croix, that tournament would have to move to St. Croix. That's because the basketball travelers, basketball tournament is already established there, and, you know, getting them to move it here would not be likely, because it is successful, they have a good track record. But this volleyball event would be moved to St. Croix once the hotels can accommodate the number of teams and whatnot. And that, that is practical, that is in writing. The good thing about a facility like this is not only can it host these type of events, but it can also do, do great things for the community. In places like Atlanta, Georgia, Kevin Shepard will be versed with places like this, the run-and-shoot concept, where you have multiple basketball courts, where we can have basketball players, for example. We could do the same thing for volleyball, they can come in and they can play in an indoor facility, they're not exposed to the elements, better flooring situation to be a little easier on the knees, et cetera, would all be provided at a facility such as this. International volleyball events, I think you've seen that there have been events in Central High School recently, and of course, we can do bigger events once we have the proper facility. Many of you may not know, or some of you do, I'm sure, because you are in the sporting world, but Senator Ussy Richards is a big dog in international basketball, and I'm certain that he will work on getting some tournaments here of significance, once this facility is completed. I think that with other facilities such as this, we haven't been able to, to really shop the kind of tournaments that we would have liked to bring to the territory, had we had the proper accommodations. NBA preseason training camps, there's been a lot of misnomers about how that all went down. The San Antonio Spurs came to the Virgin Islands, and they came to St. Thomas only because we did not have a facility like the UVI Sports and Fitness Center in St. Thomas. We didn't have one here, and that is the only reason they didn't come. When that decision-making process was being tossed around, Tim actually had that moment of pause and was like, do you think it's better to come home to the Virgin Islands or not come at all, considering that we couldn't come to St. Croix, well, not we, but that they couldn't come to St. Croix with that particular training camp? Once we have a facility like this, I can also tell you for a fact, in dealing with the NBA and, and the San Antonio Spurs at that time, subsequent to the Spurs visit, there were some issues. The showering situation, the Spurs actually did not shower at the facility. They would drive from there to, they were staying at the Ritz Carlton sweaty, because the shower situation was not enough. It was one of those things where Tim really wanted it to be as close to home as possible. We got the boats for people from St. Croix to come over, but it was not ideal in the least. So we would definitely need to, to be cognizant of those kind of things, restroom facilities, the locker room situation, those things must be considered, because I can also tell you for a fact that the Philadelphia 76ers, along with another team that I can't remember right now, was interested in having a training camp in the Virgin Islands. Right now, we have, we have a couple of guys who are in the NBA besides Tim, he's on the way out, so I don't think we're gonna be seeing a Spurs here anytime soon, but Portland Trail Blazers, David Vantapool is a coach with Portland Trail Blazers. He also has a vested interest in the summer camps. Every year, we send a player or two to the NBA Basketball Without Borders, which is a youth program, excuse me, I'm sorry, a youth program which we also do with Senator Richards, and we send players to compete and participate in this international camp. There is some interest in bringing a camp like that to the Virgin Islands. So again, this facility could accommodate that. I was basically here just to say that your support of a facility like this would do wonders for St. Croix. It's kinda like the chicken or the egg theory. Once you build a facility like this, of course, you're gonna have to, to also have the hotels to accommodate the, the number of people that you would want to bring to use a facility like this. But I, I think that this is a great complement, it is a good start. Investors in hotels and hoteliers would look into actually building a facility, building a hotel if a facility like this did exist. We could also use it for major convention centers. And I just wanna point out, for example, I, I use the Central High Gymnasium for the Sunstroke Classic every year. It costs me $1,250 a day to use that facility, people think we get it for free. However, these things generate revenue. It, it, it does wonders for our community, and I think that this project can, can do some significant things, and I know some people who want to do some significant things in the Virgin Islands, and basically waiting on a facility like this to, to start the process. So that was my piece, and it was a pleasure being here, and thank you very much, and I hope everybody have a good night.
Okay. And thank you, Rashidi. Again, we have a great compliment of individuals that have dedicated their time towards this worthy cause, and also I am very pleased to see the level of support that we hope that we will continue to get in order to move this forward. As Mr. Green mentioned, there's pre-development work that has already taken place in preparation for us to do an RFQ to, and be able to create a short list of developers. And as we complete that, we anticipate that that would be happening very shortly, within the next maybe 45 days, as we wrap up the last contracts. We have been working on all of the pre-development work that has been financed through the $2 million appropriation, and as we move, the, the next step would be to acquire the funding that would have been authorized, the next bond, so that we can begin construction. We anticipate that that would, the construction phase would be an 18-month phase, and I tell people all the time, you know, anything that you see gets, that gets built, the thought sometimes comes at the minimum two years ago. And if you reach any, through any hurdles, you may have gone through maybe a 15-year period, or maybe like the bypass, a 30-year period, but we don't want to see that happen with this project. We think this project can do monumental things for St. Croix, and we hope that we can get the type of support from the community that would allow us to move forward in bringing this to fruition. So here, we've come to the point of the meeting where you get an opportunity to ask questions, share comments. I know that, I wanna publicly thank all of you that assisted in getting the word out about the town hall meeting, those had, that have taken up the charge to dispel the myths that's out there regarding this project. And I want to assure you that the purists of intentions by all of the people here that have gotten it to this point is really all based on what we feel is best for the community and our role, whether it, we're paid for it or just because it's in our hearts. And what we're asking is that you stand and state your name and ask your question, and...
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dwayne Howell. I represent Virgin Island Volleyball Federation, and I am also commission member on North Seica Confederation. And North Seica is North America, Central America, Caribbean volleyball confederation. And we do support this project, and we want to make sure that volleyball is, is counted. As Rashidi referenced, that Virgin Island volleyball have been hosting several international tournaments here at Central, and so, and we are, and we will be hosting more tournaments. We're scheduled to host a youth tournament, and we've been asked to host world quali, we've hosted two world qualifier tournaments already, and we've been asked to host a youth world qualifier tournament, however, because of facilities, we cannot host that particular tournament. We're scheduled to host beach world qualifier tournament sometime in the summer here on St. Croix, we're trying to figure out that site. But I just wanted to make sure that in the plans that considerations for FIVB regulations, court regulations, I'm pretty sure that's thought about, but even in the competition hall and accommodations for training and practice courts, that's required. And I, I don't know about basketball, but I'm sure there's some kind of training requirement, training court. But for FIVB, we do require a training court, and it'll be good to have your training court at the same facility. And I, you know, I have information I can share later, okay? So thank you for the opportunity for us to, you know, share and share, you know, what's happening with the project.
Thank you. Thank you for your input. Other questions, comments?
Good afternoon, everyone. There is a question, resident of St. Croix. I noticed in the brochure there's a...
No, it, it would be more along the lines of gym...
Can you repeat the question for...
The question was, in, within the brochure, there was mention of a wellness center, and she wanted to clarify whether or not this was, what type of a wellness center, what would be incorporated in, in the wellness center, and it'll be more along the lines of a gym, and some of the other training and fitness-type activities that you would do at a regular gym.
Good. But the, the one thing that we didn't mention also in the, also Phase One, was the plan to include around the perimeter of the property, a fitness trail for individuals who can walk, in comparison to all these people walking up and down the street, at some point walking on Melvin Emmens Highway, and a fitness trail, not only a walking trail, but it has a various, I mean, if you have it included, it'll show some exercise equipment that exists along the trail, so people can actually be in the area and utilize it, the entire natural area to the, to its maximum capacity. I just wanted to add that after she mentioned a period of fitness. Do one listen to.
This is George Flores, and I'm here to act as a supporter of this project. I'm someone who has a project in the vicinity. I can start time or when if possible. Thank you, though.
Thank you, Mr. Flores. And one of the items that I pointed out is that the legislature have authorized this as part of a bond issuance. Before the Public Finance Authority can be able to take a project to the bond market, you must have a scope of work on exactly what it is you want happen. And so that we are in the phase where we're trying to get a scope of work and design, and we expect, Ms. Williams said, that we will be able to complete that within the next three to four months.
Forty-five days.
Forty-five days. And then it's our responsibility as a task force through Housing Finance Authority then to turn that over to PFA so that they have something to actually take to the bond market. Until this task is completed, we can't expect them to be able to take, take that to the bond market, our ideas and suggestions.
Bond market, you know, floating bonds and projects that are ready to go. So we have to ensure that all of this process is taken place, and we have a project that's shovel-ready.
Discussion, we did have a discussion with that point of access to the property would be, as I stated earlier, we're actually going to be doing a main access along Centerline Road, approximately across Comocris, Centerline Road there, and it will come in going north across that property, across the other parcel, the adjacent parcel, until, until we meet the parcel that we're working on. That would be...
On the south side of Longwood.
Yes. The one on the north side would be used as a, a service exit, emergency and service entrance and exit. So that's because it is a small road, and we don't have any intention to be bringing, you know, multiple cars in and out of it. We're gonna have a, a large setback on the stud from the back of your property line...
Well, that's what I was told, when they cleared our, right up my fence already, so...
That's part of the problem.
That's what I'm saying. Now, do you hold one thing, is five days later, something different?
Exploration is, we have to get this, we have to get the meets and the bounds of the actual parcel, so the surveyors actually have to go out and clear areas so that they can shoot the lines to make sure that, one, that the property is exactly where it is, two, we might find that there's other encroachments, people may have moved, bound posts, our bound posts may have disappeared, and things like that. So we have to see, and we have to be able to secure the property. So that's part of what, what has been going on, and then as I stated before, there's a topographical survey that happened down this way.
I begin to, to answer your question, and the property you live in is formerly owned and used to live in by the Whitaker family.
Right.
And I don't think this is a forum to, to, to go into boundaries, but the, the property, I've been going through this when I was a little child, eight years old, it currently encroaches, based on the gate direction, on...
I understand.
Yeah, let, well, let me finish, I've listened to you. On, on, on the, on the access, that public access road to the property, on the, the north side, I believe, it's you, it's you and your family, which is also the, the Clark property, property.
Your child, he gave it to us.
You, you have your property, and he has a house there. On the northern side, there's also some encroachment by the property owners on that access road. And I believe what Ms. Williams and Mr. Green are saying is that we are cognizant of the fact that there have been encroachment by statute and by law, given a tax assessor and property lines, that the access does exist, and so that we are prepared through the task force with Housing Finance Authority to take into consideration and how best to address that, that issue. And I don't want to be repetitive and redundant, but Mr. Green said it in his opening remarks, and then he just said it again, so I wouldn't be repetitive and... and then he just said it again, so I wouldn't be repetitive and redundant in this particular instance. The intent for the main access is to be along Queen Mary Highway, across from the Camacris, there's a border fence with the intent of having a three-lane road, at times when the event is going on, it'll be two lanes in and one lane out when the event is over. They're proposing to have two lanes out and one lane in. And my last response to the concern of all property owners, and I'm glad that you are here, that progress requires some sacrifice. And I think for me, who have been a friend of mine all of my life, that some concerns are going to have to be addressed, and how best to be able to address the concerns of the neighbors, and to have the neighbors work with the project for the benefit of the western end and the entire island of St. Croix when we speak about economic development. Not just the social activity, this is an economic development project.
I'm glad this thing is coming to Mars Hill, because we're not in Frederickstad, for something we've done, how it's going back up. As Ari mentioned, and my partner right here, he gave me the button of the new commissioner of Mars Hill. When you come into Frederickstad, the big building, you said the pretty building?
Yeah.
That's my building, right?
Right.
And I want to bring up Mars Hill in Frederickstad, and I think it's a good project. If your care brain hasn't six to eight months, it won't be behind you. Okay? Because I want, I want Mars Hill to come up. And tell me something in Frederickstad, you don't want to have JSA, like, you don't want to do it.
It's dangerous.
Just do it. All about to get something out of it, okay? Say, "Green, get out of here, get something out of there." All right? I play my game, spend no money, earn my pocket. You can't, that's someone I give no money, nobody want to give up. This company, Frederickstad, bound to give money, you know, to build, you know, just do something, okay? Just start the task and do the work.
All right, Kevin Shepherd Choices Basketball. All right, I'm a big pusher for the next generation.
Speak loud.
That ain't loaded enough?
No.
He don't want to give me a mic, you know, Rashidi know about that, so. Trying to be nice, I'm calm right now, so. But really, you know, I'm a fighter for the next generation, 1,000% for this project. I think it's way and far overdue. St. Croix definitely need a project like this yesterday, not tomorrow, yesterday, that's what badly we need it, to travel all over the world, we need this, sports tourism, et cetera. My only comment for this is for you guys, the developers, have something in mind to have, not, let me phrase this correctly, that we not just put down a building, but put that building with power. We have so many great Virgin Island athletes, we need to have some type of wall of fame, Hall of Fame, where you walk in, you see a Tim Duncan, a Roger Bell, where the next generation will walk in there and feel like, hey, one of us did this.
And we could be...
And this is far overdue, you know, because, you know, even me, I mean, I'm looking for some respect, people just see me walking on the street, and they think like I never been nowhere, you know, so I want to be nominated myself, I want to be in the wall of fame. You know, but really, we need, we need that for the next generation, our next generation need to have some type of history in order to look forward to, and they can see someone who did it, who been from here, who actually been successful, and they can strive to be that same type of person that you're betting. That we not just put the building alone, that we have something, if there's some structure, if you put a little statue, a Timmy or something, that we have something that will have some type of power, just for them. So that's my only pitch to you guys, don't forget, you know, the little guys there, play for them, so. Let me do this, right?
Not only that, but in terms of preparing our young athletes to be able to compete and step into the line where they can become the next Tim Duncan and all of that, you look at kids that are able to get the training from the time they're 10, 11, 12, that when they get to the main line, when they get to college, they can actually shine, so excellent suggestion, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Hatturas, candidate, also a baseball player, I have a lot of sons that grew up here, going to raise, and actually, one is a scholarship, the NBA's basketball ambassador. So I really want to commend everybody here for strong efforts, and I do support this project 100%. Looking from an economical standpoint now, I would like to ask or suggest, you guys are open, you have to be open-minded to other avenues of sports as well. All the sports I see here, we do support them, we all play here locally, but I'm not saying if we could step out of the picture, step out of the box, and see where if we could entertain cricket, cricket in the Virgin Islands, especially here on St. Croix, we do have a dive boss, and St. Croix is a melting pot, and doing the research and looking at what's going on around the world, you know, cricket has been making big strides throughout the Caribbean, and now, right now, if you look and do the research, Florida has opened doors, first state in the United States, have built a stadium for cricket, and they are now benefiting from all the resources, the economic resources that they are now gradually getting from all over the world. So I'm asking you guys, if you are open to this suggestion, good night, if you're willing to incorporate Cricket Stadium within that project, that will help boost the economy here on St. Croix, will bring more tourism here to the island of St. Croix, and that will open doors for hotels and everything that comes with tourism. So I'm just asking a suggestion, I'd like to put it out there, thank you.
We've mentioned that Commissioner Williams is a part of the task force, so that the Poly Joseph Stadium project and the Mars Hill project, they will not overlap, and we will, they will complement each other. And I, we can, we were, in our considerations, we'll have, continue to have those discussions to see where, between the two facilities, that we can incorporate those other sports. So thank you.
Can you hear me?
Oh, no.
My name is Kevin two times, and I'm a property owner on the north side, so I'm glad that you brought up that there's going to be some collaboration and talking about how access we can implement, if we're going to do stuff with all of this. So I'm hoping that that is going to really happen. I want to make one recommendation, I know we're all here, we've been asked to give what we think people might want, or what kind of activity they might want at the facility. I'm going to make the recommendation that you all do a survey somehow, you can use social networks, it's been questioned out to the own population that you're trying to tap into. All right, we want to thank you for coming out this evening, and we're in... We want to thank you for coming out this evening, and we are interested in getting the comments from the general community. You can give us a call in our offices at 772-4432, or you may email us at vihfa@vihfa.gov. Thank you.